We'll call this meeting to order as the regular meeting of the Belflar City Council. It's Monday, July 12, 2021 at seven o'clock in the evening. There are no reportable actions to report from our closed session meeting. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Santiness.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here.
This evening will be provided the invocation by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance with Len Gurecki, our Assistant City Manager and Director of Public Works. Please stand with me.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please watch over us here tonight as we make our decisions for the betterment of our city Belflar. Let us have the wisdom to get through the current drought in fire seasons that is upon us at this time. Let us have the courage to make things better for the less fortunate. Always be with our troops and first responders, Lord. In your name, amen.
Please address the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton, Mr. Gurecki. The City of Belflar has begun our redistricting process. The redistricting process occurs every 10 years following the release of the census results. It is an opportunity to redraw district lines based on population changes indicated in the census at the state, county, and city levels. Residents can submit maps of their own and get involved in the process. For more information, you can visit our redistricting website at www.drawbelflar.org or email redistricting@belflar.org. Mr. Ray Dutton, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Each month, the city is highlighting a local business in our very own e-Citizen newsletter. And we'll feature a short video on Belflar's YouTube channel to showcase our local businesses. Small business owners can participate at no cost and will be interviewed by our city staff. For more information, please call the Economic Development Department at (562) 804-1424, extension 2249. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Sunny R. Santiness.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Belflar's Parks and Recreation Department provides a summer drop-in program at all three supervised parks. This program is free and provides fun supervised activities for kids during the 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. timeframe, Monday through Friday. For more information, please call the Parks and Recreation Department at (562) 804-1424, extension 2268. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santiness. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, first off, good evening, Belflar. The City of Belflar's Third Street Fest concert will be next Thursday, July 22, at 6:30 p.m. These events are free and open to the public. The fourth concert is scheduled for August 5, which will also be joined with the Public Safety Department's National Night Out activities within the Street Fest footprint. All concerts will begin promptly at 6:30 and end at 8:30 p.m. For more information, please call the Parks and Rec... Book Department at (562) 804-1424, extension 2261. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, good evening, Belflar. For those of you who are tenants, who have fallen behind on rent or other payments to their landlords due to the financial hardship caused by the pandemic, will continue to be protected from evictions due to non-payment through September 30, 2021. Despite these protections, tenants still have an obligation to pay their unpaid rent. If you are a renter or a landlord, you may qualify for assistance for overdue rent, up to 100% of the amount owed. This may even include money for future rent owed. For more information, please visit the State of California's website, housingiskey.com, or call the Housing is Key COVID-19 Assistance Line at 1-833-422-4255. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Victor Sanchez. So, at this time, we're going to have a presentation by our operator of the main center, TGIS Catering. George, you're up.
Good evening, City of Belflar, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I first wanted to say it's... Twenty thousand meals that were donated and we raised money to help do that. We delivered senior meals for, gosh, three or four months. We delivered them, we packed them, we did everything. And with that, we were able to keep enough of the team together and, you know, and keep the company intact and able to move forward. So, we feel blessed. We were happy to be able to assist the first responders and be able to assist the people in the community that really shouldn't have been out at all. I have an 80-year-old parent, so I know what it's like. You're terrified if somebody happened to your mom or your dad. Anyway, so that made us feel like we were able to give back and do something. With respect to the main event center, the individual that we had that was in charge of running it and onsite looked for employment elsewhere. And we went out and did a long search and we found somebody, Monica Sejore. She's been employed with us for the last three weeks now. She was at the Beverly Hills Hotel for four, five years. And prior, and right after that, she was at Le Meridian Hotel in Santa Monica for three years. So, we feel blessed to have her. She's an industry veteran. She, I believe, will do a wonderful job. All reports are, our bookings are, I mean, we are really, they're really in there, they're working. We're booking away, we've booked 35 events since June 15. So, considering how many Saturdays there are left in the year, I believe in September, we have two Saturdays left. October, I think there's only one on the 30th. December, Christmas falls on Saturday this year, so obviously, that's not available. I mean, we're not planning to book, but there's one Saturday left in December and there's only, I believe, one Saturday left in November as well. But, you know, we have 35 events and there's more than just 35 Saturdays left. So, bookings are strong. People are coming in, so that is really positive news. Dollar-wise, the dollars are looking better. I mean, in 2020, we did, all told, I believe, 13 events and then it was just a collapse after that. So, we'd gotten 13 events in in January and February and then the market collapsed. I looked, we did book a few small events in that summer of 2020 when things eased up and we were allowed to use the exterior. We did a couple of small, very small things, but they were 20, 30 people. It was more just to feel like we were doing something. It wasn't really a moneymaker in any way, shape, or form, but we were blessed to be able to do something and keep some of our people employed. So, that was wonderful. The outlook is good. We are spending money. We're not afraid to go out there and challenge the market. I don't think that you can make money in this economy and not put yourself out there a little bit, but we are cautiously spending money to market and get the site and let people know we're open for business and we are, you know, prepared to do events again. Like I said, from speaking to Monica and speaking to Mark, who was in charge of the site, while we were, even though we were shut down, we were answering calls. I'm proud to say that we did refund everybody, even deposits. We just felt that at a certain point, people kept calling and we kept saying, "Oh, you know what, let's just wait and see, wait." And finally, we just refunded even the deposits, even though our contract said the deposits were non-refundable. Sophia and I feel like people really needed the money and so we just dug down and refunded all the deposits as well for those who wanted them. We also didn't want the City Council and you guys burdened with the phone calls and explaining, "Well, you know, the site is run by TGIS," so on and so forth. Positive things, bookings are good. We feel that we're off to a strong start. I believe we already have 16 on the calendar for 2022 as well. So, you know, we feel really confident. We feel we have the right people in place. Challenges? COVID. Today, I read that LA Unified School Districts are going to make masks mandatory. So, all that kind of stuff really makes us think that maybe we're not, you know, we're not getting through this and we are seeing some spikes. Hopefully, it doesn't return to, first thing that will stop, as we would all imagine, our events, right? So, we're praying that, you know, things don't go down that path again after we've just started rebuilding. Second challenge, employees. We cannot find people. I think since June 15, including 4th of July, I've had two days off because it's, the burden is falling on everybody who's gonna work. We're working double hard just to keep up. We can't find people and I think the, it's generous to subsidize, what, a bit of moratorium on rent and to provide federal assistance in unemployment, but it's really been difficult for us to find employees. So, hopefully, come September 31st, we will see that ease up and give us an opportunity to get more folks on board. Good news is, the folks that are on board are people that are industrious and they just can't sit at home anymore. So, you know, they do seem to enjoy working and we have, you know, a pretty good attitude amongst the folks who've come back aboard and we're happy to have them. Other challenge, inflation. Very difficult to price anything. Commodities are double what they were as far as food goes. I think lumber has fallen, but beef and chicken are still high. And of course, with the shortage in labor, we're seeing increase in labor costs and we're seeing that in everything too, across the board with fuel. And, you know, basically, everything coming in, coming out requires fuel. So, we're having a lot of difficulty pricing the menus and feeling confident about it because we're just not sure where this pricing is going to go. Market research and everything we've looked into kind of tells us that expect it to remain high through the end of the year. So, we're hoping at that point, we'll see some easing and pricing will flatten out and it will give us a little more confidence. So, you know, it's very difficult to be confident about how you're pricing things when you're in this inflationary environment, an environment we really haven't been in for 20 years. I can never remember things up this high over a sustained period for, yeah, since I've been, since I've graduated from college and I'm old now. You can imagine what it's like and how it gives a feeling of instability. So, we're hoping that will resolve itself as the year goes on. Other than that, though, you know, we think the outlook is very good. We think people are a pin-up. We feel we're getting, you know, a lot of inquiries and we're booking a lot of events. That's not just true here, but also at TGIS itself, the off-prem part of the company. We're seeing a lot of bookings coming through. And fortunately, you know, we were a larger company, we're able to sustain ourselves and keep the doors open. But again, back to, you know, employees. We have 12 trucks and we can only send out six on a given weekend because that's where we have to cap things off. So, we have six trucks that are sitting idle. We'd like to get them back there on the road, but we're confident that come, come fall, we will. Are there any questions? I hope that kind of summarizes what's going on.
Yes, I'm sure there are a few questions. Let's start off with Mayor Protem Ray Dutton. Because he's always got full, and he's probably one of your best customers over there.
I believe he is, yes, that's true.
I called, I called the main office Friday and left a message and I'm waiting, waiting on a call back.
Okay, okay.
One thing I noticed when I went to the website, I didn't know if anybody was over at the main answering phones or whatever, and I didn't see a phone number for the main on your main, on your main website.
On the main, main website?
Yeah, on your, on your main website, TGIF, that has venues and has all the list of all the different venues and then you have the contracted venues on it.
Okay, no, I understand.
But there was none, I couldn't click on nothing, but it was just kind of, and I get it, it's, things are changed. Things are different, different or whatever, so I just called the main line or whatever and left a voicemail and whatnot, so. But anyway, I have two dates that I need, but they're Fridays, so we're probably okay.
Yeah.
I got two Fridays I want to book.
No, we had to make changes to the website and we're still trying to iron things out to get back because we didn't have employees. We came down to two salespeople, so, yeah. We'll straighten, we'll iron that stuff out. Thank you for letting me know.
Hospice or whatever, whatnot, I just didn't want to share it in public, but oh, well. Mayor asked me to. But anyway, I'm looking, I am looking forward to, you know, and I got, you know, people chomping at the bit to get into the main and have our biggest social event here in the town to...
And we're looking forward to having them.
Yeah, so with that said, I mean, I'm glad you're back. I'm glad, glad to hear that you hired this woman to be in charge over there. I'll get to know her. It must be because of the, she's not driving to Santa Monica and she's not driving to Beverly Hills, I'm taking.
That helped because, yeah, that she was, she actually had been offered a position again in LA and we were able to discuss it and convince her that this was the place to be.
Oh, yeah.
And she's in a city close by, very close by, a sister city to Belflar, so.
And it's either, you know, the two hours, three hours a day driving is a bless. But as soon as you said, my daughter used to work in West Hollywood and that was, you know, I didn't even see her because she was always on the road, but...
It's a brutal drive.
I get it, I get that drive, it's terrible. But I'm glad to see you're building it and I understand, I totally understand what a pandemic does to the business because I'm a business owner and I'm still trying to get people, you know, and I'm trying to, you know, you reinvent yourself through this last year and a half and as to what you're doing and trying to put things in place to move on. And it sounds like you're, with your presentation here tonight, that you are. You answered all the questions in my head and I'm glad to see you're back.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Ray.
Anyone else have any questions while George is here? Anyone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
George, thank you so much for your presentation and again, I'm glad that you're back. So, can you just explain more about your experience this year so far? How many bookings have you had already that were, that were held?
So far, since June 15th, we are at about 35 bookings.
So, how many of those events were held already?
I believe we are about 11 of them.
We're done?
We're done.
Okay, so how, how was the experience in terms of the crowd, in terms of parking? Can you tell us? Because I'm really curious because the parking structure was built just in time for COVID, so to speak.
The timing was perfect.
So, I really wanted to know, based on your customers' experience, how did they, how would they relate into the use of the parking structure? Was there any big issue?
So far, in discussing it with Monica and Mark, everybody is thrilled about the parking structure. I don't think they, a lot of people understood the difficulties we were having prior to that because with the new outdoor space, right next door, it was getting very difficult to find any parking. So, everyone's thrilled and we're hoping it will remain available and we think we'll be fine because our events start generally a little earlier. So, we think there'll always be availability there. And I think the downtown center itself, where people are going to dinner and so on, will be coming a little later. So, I think our, our guests will be able to get in and utilize that parking structure. And it's very convenient, it's, you know, there's a light there, everyone crosses and we've been told that nobody's had anything negative to say about it yet. And it's free, so, you know, if you go to a lot of hotels, you either have to sponsor the parking as the host and that could cost you nowadays, you know, 15, $20 a car or, you know, I think it's a big selling point that your guests can come and there's free parking across the street. It is something we actually advertise in our packets, which are actually be currently being redone because we had to reprice everything a second time already. So, now they're being repriced again to hold through, to get us to what we think, hopefully. Maybe if it goes down sooner, then we'll revert back to a earlier price, but yeah, it's, yeah, we're doing them right now. That's what I was doing on, prior to coming here, is just repricing. But no, they love the parking structure, we're thrilled. Today, I gave authorization to buy new furniture for the bridal room, which was in the ticketing office of the building of the original Train Depot. So, the ticketing office will be bridal space and from there, brides can walk around the corner just straight to the ceremony site, which is the green space. Only issue we do have is sometimes there's some homeless stuff going on in and around the green space. I know you guys doing the best you can and, you know, we deal with it the best we can, too.
Yeah, just have them call, we'll stay on it. Just have them call the substation or one of us here and we'll get on.
Yeah, I mean, but yeah, we do the best we can with it and we do inform people and just say in the contractually that, you know, that this is a public space and, you know, people are allowed to walk through and around it, so we don't make any guarantees.
Well, you know that we have more, better tools now to handle the issue of homelessness.
Yes.
Okay, so that, that will help.
Yes, absolutely.
And so far, what was your largest crowd this year so far? How many people?
Hundred and fif, 200, sorry.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay, 200, that's pretty good. Okay, and finally, you mentioned about the difficulty of getting employees. I think you're not, you're not alone, especially the restaurant business. A lot of people are, business owners are having difficulty and I think that's one of the reasons because of the stimulus. And that, that should run out by September, hopefully.
Yeah, I think that combined with the, I think they're all very great ideas, but I, but it's, it's, you know, there, there's a time and a place for everything and my personal is maybe they're, we're kind of run its course. We really, Americans are very, my parents came here from Greece to get a job and to be working and to feel dignity and have something that, you know, now we're, it's, it's a strange, it's a strange thing. If my dad was around, I don't think he would understand what's going on. All he wanted was a job.
All right, well, thank you so much for your presentation and I wish you the best and...
Thank you, Councilmember Sunny, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment to make.
Sure, right ahead.
First off, George, it's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you for all the information that you've relayed to us this evening. I wish you the best of luck and I hope that our numbers stayed down so that we don't have to go through what we've gone through in the last 18 months. So, just best of luck out there and we hope to see it be successful, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Victor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada, have you anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. George, again, thank you. First up, I want to, again, thank you for staying the course and definitely staying professional about it and also giving back to the community.
Thank you.
Those, I mean, those are awesome things.
Thank you.
Maybe my, my only question is, what's your, what's your major marketing avenue? How do you get the word out there that, that we are open, where we have, we have the space, we have...
What we are, what we're doing right now is we're transitioning from things that we used to do. Well, one of the things we did do during the downtime is look at marketing and look at where we are finding, our brides are finding us and partygoers are finding us. And we are moving our services to more digital means and more SEO. We're spending more money on SEO and on digital advertising. Instead of traditional advertising like wedding wire and so on and so forth, we think that that's how people shop with Instagram and things like that. They're finding their locations that way. So, that's what we are focusing on now and we are, we are awaiting new results, so hopefully, we're right. So, it takes time and then we're going to be presented with a number of hits, so on and so forth, and how that's affecting us and how we're getting bookings.
Hopefully, there's some more class reunions coming. There's a few here in the next five years.
Yeah, boy, he's got a chance.
All right, thank you, George.
Absolutely, thank you, Councilmember Raymond.
Before you go, George, one of the things that I don't think we had completed when we had the pandemic strike was the Wedding Garden area. Had you ever had use of that prior to the pandemic or not?
No, not really. We had just photo, we photographed it a week before and we had photographed it and went through the
brochure.
Effort of bringing out a professional photographer, setting it up and doing that, and then the pandemic struck.
So, it's really refreshing to know that you are going to provide furniture in the oldest structure in Belflar, which is that train station, for the brides to prepare themselves.
Right, because we just see that it's crucial and we think, it's actually really pretty. I mean, too, it's a covered area, you come out on that covered porch area. It's, I think, a very unique thing that I think brides are going to be thrilled about when they...
Has anyone taken advantage of that opportunity yet? Have you had a bride use it?
It cleared and Len's putting air conditioning in it someday soon.
Yeah, we have just, yeah, just, just buying the furniture.
Yeah, it's just, the thing was being used for, you know, storage and other stuff. We just got it cleared and getting ready to go right now, recently.
Cool, well, I think that it's a wonderful opportunity, but yet to have anybody actually get married out in that area, have you?
Oh, no, we've had, we've had a couple of weddings out there already, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and a couple of, we had a older couple last summer, 80-year-old couple, did a renewed their vows.
Well, you can understand how enthusiastic we are with you and don't be bashful if you have a need to try to make things better. I mean, we bet the farm on trying to get that building up and financed and paid for and so that we could have a great operator like you be there. And so, hopefully, we can continue upward and onward and that's shining light here in our city, having that parking garage work. We've got something going on across the street where the old market was and so we're going to protect you and guide you the best we can, but knowing you're the professional. You're the one that's going to make it happen and we're so glad that you've been able to sustain this long period of dormancy and still be with us.
Thank you, Mayor Dan.
All right, thank you. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
If you'd like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press six to raise your hand. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. Madam City Clerk, you guide us as to who might be available.
Mayor, I have a person wishing to present comment by the name of Dee. Can you please identify yourself?
I'm new. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Dee Bennett. I'm sorry, this, the website is not easy to navigate. I'll let you know, I've been on the Cerritos website and I don't know who's in charge of doing these websites, but their website in Cerritos is really easy to deal with and find out information. And this is like a circuitous route to try and find out where you're supposed... And this is like a circuitous route to try and find out where you're supposed to go to attend the Zoom meeting. Because I haven't been getting the um, the notifications from the city lately. I'm not sure what's going on with that, I'll have to find out. But anyway, um, I want to address the fact that even though some people seem to feel that the um, the use of fireworks has been a little bit less this year, it's still way out of control. Everybody who has animals, everybody who has PTSD, all that kind of stuff, I I know you've all heard it before, but we really should work on doing something about that. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, we should outlaw any kind of fire, personal fireworks. That'll make it a lot easier for uh, for the Sheriff's Department, which we all share. Look, other than that, um, I am in a situation where I am in the air current of Green Wolf Cannabis operation flowing right towards my home. And this whole block stinks of cannabis. It's been going on for months and months. It took me quite a while to figure out where it was coming from. Um, and then when I figured it out and contacted Melissa Atkinson and she guided me to Esmeralda, who also is an inspector in the Code Enforcement Department. Anyway, so, so all that's been going on all this time and it's still happening. They've been cooperating, um, but the fact that it's been going on all this time and we've been forced with live, to live with it is is really crazy. So I don't know what's going to happen in the interim. It's not gone. They've been asked to get more um filters. They obviously didn't know what they were doing when this all started. Uh, we've heard all the stuff, we've raised all our concerns, we've been made promises and none, none of the stuff has gone the way that everybody thought it was going to go. You you guys in particular, I don't know where you did your homework, but I've been reading a lot of stuff on different avenues as far as what's happening in other parts of the country that have enabled this to happen. And it's stinky, it's nasty. So I don't know what the answer is. Um, they're still having to work on the filtration system, but the fact that we're not supposed to have to smell it is a big concern.
Okay, your three minutes is up. We'll move on to the next uh possible participant.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any further raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to uh public hearing eleven A. Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to conduct.
Yep, I just spoke on city council.
Okay, what they said.
Okay. Uh, this item is consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider delinquent refuse service charges and adopt resolution number twenty-one dash forty-six. A resolution ordering delinquent refuse service charges to be assessed against the property owners and properties and such charges be transferred to the county tax rolls. And Mr. Nigwas, I believe, has a staff report for this.
All right, go forward, please.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Jennifer, if you can give me sharing rights, please.
Yes, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. For background, CRNR provides recycling and solid waste services in the city of Bellflower through a solid waste franchise agreement. CRNR builds customers directly for these services. Refuse service charges then become delinquent if they are not paid within thirty days. The Bellflower Municipal Code defines the procedures for collection of delinquent refuse service charges. The city also retains ten percent of the delinquent amount as an administrative fee. In regard to the process, CRNR prepared a list of delinquencies as of May thirty-first. CRNR then mailed a notice to customers informing them of the delinquent amounts on June seventh. This was followed by a a city uh letter to property owners also informing them of the delinquent amounts on June sixteenth. A notice of public hearing was published by the city on June twenty-fourth and again on July first. Before you tonight will be a public hearing. Should the proceedings move forward, the last day for customers to pay CRNR their delinquent amounts will be July twenty-second. And then the city will submit the final list to the county by August tenth. The tables before you illustrate a comparison between last year and this year. In regard to this year, as of May thirty-first, there were a total of four hundred and twenty-seven delinquent accounts for a total amount owed of seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. As of July first, those figures were reduced to a total of two hundred and sixty-six accounts for a total amount owed of sixty thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Again, the August tenth amounts will be to be determined. However, a- as you can see by both tables, the numbers pretty much track the same, so we would anticipate the final counts to be between two hundred and two hundred and fifty accounts. Staff recommends that the city council open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt resolution number twenty-one dash four-six or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. Uh, Crystal Danning from CRNR is available to answer questions. So with that, uh, this concludes my staff report and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your report. Uh, any council members have any questions of staff?
I'll move, we open the public hearing, seeing no questions.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Without objection, that'll be the order for the public hearing to be opened.
Uh, Mayor, quickly here, uh, for the record, I just wanted to state that we did receive one public comment on this item earlier this afternoon, um, submitted by Mr. Anthony Russell and that was provided to the city council and made available to the public on the city's website.
Yes, we've all received a copy of the letter. Is there anyone that would like to give testimony on this item?
Mayor, I'll give, oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, um, as far as the public comments, can we ask Ms. Danning to make some comments?
Okay.
I think she, I believe she works for CRNR.
All right, if she's on the line, we'll certainly accept what she wants to offer. Ms. Danning, would you like to give some testimony?
Good evening, council members, mayor. This is Crystal Danning with CRNR, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go forward.
Okay, wonderful, I just want to make sure. Um, we're, um, I I I'm open to answer any questions you may have regarding this item. It's our standard process in terms of notification, um, tax rolling, and happy to answer any questions regards to the process. Um, but other than that, um, I'm open to anything else you want to discuss or ask regarding this item.
Yes, Ms. Danning, we've done this, you know, the procedure stays the same each year.
Correct.
So if we have no questions, only because we're uh aware of what has happened previously and it remains the same. But uh I I appreciate you being available in case we have somebody that's on the line that would like to give a question or testimony. So please stay with us.
Absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Ms. Danning, uh, or the staff, was she given a copy of this public comment?
Uh, yes, I was.
Okay, can you comment on that, especially the last, the last, um, the last sentence of the letter?
Uh, when I can comment, just overall, the protocol and the process, um, in terms of what we do is follow what's in the agreement. Our processes, regards to our billing system, um, any sort of late fees or charges that are assessed are assessed after a sixty-day, when it, when a customer has a balance that's greater than sixty days. So no long, nothing earlier than that process. Our system is set up that way. So in the event that a customer doesn't pay their their invoice from CRNR during that timeframe, is only when they would accrue any additional charges for late fees or finance charges.
Okay, so let me just clarify, so, so you bill the customers on the first of the month?
That is correct. Residential customers are billed on the first.
Okay.
And it's for a two, it's for a two-month period.
Okay, and then the, so the late fee accrues only after sixty days, uh, after the billing date?
Correct.
Okay, all right, very good. Thanks for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Any other council members, like, questions of Ms. Danning or you're good with what's going forward?
I'm good.
All right.
Not seeing any more public, I'd like to make a motion, we close the public hearing then.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember, no, Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Sunny Sanñez. Please poll the council.
No, that was, yeah.
Um, there is no motion on the floor, I need a motion.
Yeah, it was just closed. We already, we closed the public hearing and any more discussion? Anyone who make a motion to approve or disprove what we've put forward?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash forty-six. A resolution, resolution ordering the delinquent refuse, refuse service charges to be assessed against the property owners and properties such charges to be transferred to the county tax rolls.
Second.
All right, so we have a support by uh, have a motion made by Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Uh, please poll the council.
Councilmember Santenaz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Coops.
Aye. Ordinance and resolutions for consideration, there are none. Consideration items, there are none. Brings us to consent calendar. Does anyone have any conflicts on any of this evening's closed session items? Or are there any items that council members wish to be polled for separate discussion or consideration? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmembers Sunny, Sunny Anes, supported by Councilmember Raymond Haddutton. I'm Raymond Hamada. That's a little of both and uh, please council, close, please poll the council.
Councilmember Santenaz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Coops.
Aye. Council comments. Let's start off with uh, Councilmember Sunny Sanñez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate again, uh, the Bellflower Somerset Municipal Water System for a hundred and ten years of service to the city of Bellflower. We went to the uh event last uh, last week and it was well-attended and it was a a great testimony to the, to that service that they provide to the city. Uh, and also thanks to the Church of Jesus Latter Day Saints. Uh, we attended the um, the flag raising ceremony headed by our mayor, who made a wonderful comment. I mean, how can you top that comment, Ma- Mayor? That was really good. So anyway, thanks to the Church of Jesus Latter Day Saints for inviting us every year to this um, patriotic flag raising ceremony. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton.
I would just like to say that uh, everybody, uh, now that we're over with the Fourth of July and all those illegal fireworks and uh we can move on. I would also like to say that just because that time of the season is over, don't think we're going to let up on the throttle on going after property owners for the two thousand dollar ticket. If we see fireworks coming from that lot or that piece of property. Um, we're going to keep going here on out and it appears to be a yearly thing now. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year of illegal fireworks. So tell your neighbors, tell your friends, um, that we're not going to have it anymore and uh, the, the fines are going to come down. Um, with that said, uh, be careful in this uh, hot weather and in the droughtish seasons when you're not around, when you're out to open, open fields and whatnot. We don't want to burn anything up. Uh, we're going to be in one for one heck of a year with this heat and dry vegetation. With that said, thank you, Mayor, for letting me have my comments and uh, thank you very much, bye.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. How about Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, last month on the twenty-ninth, uh, let's see, Councilman Sanchez and I were able to make it to the mingle, the morning mingle of the Chamber of Commerce, so they're back. And it was quite a sizable uh, crowd. I believe there was definitely well over fifty. Let's just say the room was full, the entire space was full. And so they had a, a very good time and uh, things are, it sounds like things are picking up. We, um, staff and council provided some, you know, short reports and so on. Um, so uh, yeah, and everything's looking good back with the chamber. And um, on the um, on the first, I was able to attend both SCAGS Transportation Comit, Commission, uh, I'm sorry, Committee and the SCAG Regional Council. I think the only thing of uh, of, of interest was the um, was the update we received uh, again, from the California Air Resources Board uh, in regards to their twenty-twenty-two scoping plan. Again, greenhouse gases, they're uh, they're going to, they're, again, seeking a forty percent reduction from the nineteen ninety levels by the year twenty-thirties. So uh, and this is all set forth in uh state law and uh, so there's targets and uh, eventually they were saying that California could be carbon neutral by twenty forty-five. So good luck with that. Um, uh, I had the esteemed pleasure to ride in the war zone on the fourth. It, it was uh, the so-called war zone. To me, it was still as busy as someone was last year. I mean, I mean, what I saw most was more the gatherings. Everybody was back together, huge gatherings. And so um, um, I was able to function as a spotter. And uh, so we were uh noting uh, uh, the actual lighting off or the uh, the ones in backyard. Uh, so um, again, just want to just tell the community, there's a local law. Please listen to, you know, and follow it. And some of the dangerous things that we saw were little children playing with roman candles, lighting the uh, the rockets. And that should never happen. You're going to put your children in danger and, and that's, it's going to be a very unfortunate situation should something go wrong. So um, last thing, um, on the eighth last week, I was able to go on a tour of the World Energy Facility in Paramount. Uh, that's the former, of, of, of Paramount Petroleum. Uh, they gave us a presentation, uh, just a little tour of the facility. It happened to be on probably one of the hottest days of the year too. And we had to wear overalls, hat, uh, I had to put on my steel-toed shoes and goggles and everything. So I got my workout in, in about a mile and a half of total sweat. And so, and I think the, some of the, I think overalls still might be sticking to me, so. Uh, but um, uh, just some information, I know that uh, uh, they are working on again, doing some improvements to their facility. Uh, and there's a draft EIR that's coming down the road. So I think staff, definitely staff's aware of it, the planning staff. And uh, there's uh, they're looking at some possible improvements on Lakewood Boulevard too. So that's all part of the scope and, and traffic issues and so on. So that's, that's down the road. Uh, definitely sometime um, by the end of the summer, I believe, or, or like early fall. That uh, you know, that document should be out, so. But again, that facility has, again, totally changed from, uh, you know, producing petroleum products. Now bio, bio fuel. And so they take grease, they take uh, um, other, uh, you know, the organics and they convert it to uh, fuel. And uh, uh, one of their specialty fuels is the uh, is, is, is for aviation. So it's pumped right there and then it's trucked over to LAX. And uh, um, they're producing uh, uh, quite a bit of it. Um, there hasn't been as many, uh, you know, the flare-ups as we probably saw in many years past. Um, uh, it's only on occasion where there's some, there's some excess, but it's, it's all natural where it, it's not like, you know, smelling the uh, uh, you know, the Arco uh facilities or seventy-six facilities and so on. So that's all changed and um, uh, they're looking at some, uh, some more improvements. So that, I mean, that, I mean, that site's sixty-five acres and it's huge. So that, I mean, that, I mean, that site's sixty-five acres, and it's huge. I mean, it's not the biggest. They're the only, uh, uh, you gotta bag company, Paramount's their only west coast facility. They have about a half a dozen on the east coast, so. Um, um, and it was purchased back in eighteen, and finally, and then, so they're gonna be improving it, so, um, uh, uh, we'll be seeing, uh, more of it. Um, but they did invite, um, anyone from, again, the council or, or staff to go out there, and they're, uh, they're open to, um, uh, being a, um, a local participant in any, um, you know, city activities, 'cause they've been offering like internships to children, uh, to, uh, the high school kids, and, uh, uh, they didn't get any from Bellflower. They've been trying to find some, so I, I was getting in contact with the principals of, of Bellflower High School Mayfair and Somerset, so, uh, hopefully there's some, uh, kids from Bellflower that could be, uh, you know, working there if, if they so choose. So, all right? Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
So when you went over on July eighth, did you realize, you knew the weather, but you didn't realize the suit up, uh, that was gonna be.
No, we didn't. We just said, he just said, "Wear your shoes, and you can, you'll, you'll get a helmet and some goggles," and then suddenly they said, "Try to get in this." And it's like, "I have my coat."
It's very noble. You did a good job representing all the council. I wanna thank you for having done that.
Yeah, well.
And we'll go back when, as soon as it cools off.
I'm gonna try to put on the ten or so pounds that I lost that day.
Above and beyond what you did. So, uh.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first off, I'd like to comment or expand on, uh, the fireworks, um, item and the season of it. Um, you know, first off, as a, uh, young parent with a two-year-old and, and then a cat owner and a dog owner, I completely understand the, the concerns of our constituents, and, and, um, and I know Mayor Protam, uh, Dutton expanded on, you know, the continued enforcement. Um, with that, I wanna just expand a little bit. If, if, if the residents are experiencing, um, ongoing events where it's repetitive and it's, you know, around the same timeframe and so forth, they, they should be made, or they, I'd like to make them aware of, that they can call that in, information in, to our public safety department. Um, I know that's been mentioned before by a colleague, and that number is eight oh four, one four two four, extension two five two five. And I know that our public safety team have been working really diligently in trying to enforce as much as possible the illegal fireworks. Uh, the reality is, right, uh, it's a difficult item to catch if it's one-off, but when it's repetitive in nature, call it in, and, uh, if it's a neighbor, call it in, let us know, and our public safety team will be out there to, uh, surveillance and, and send that, uh, two thousand dollar fine. So I just wanted to expand on that. Um, and then, um, on the matter of, uh, I think it was mentioned, uh, about the green wolf and the smell, I know that's not falling. I know, I don't speak for myself here, I know that we are all concerned about that, and can, and our staff continue to work to address that. So I just wanna, uh, share that and just say my sentiments on that. Uh, switching over to a more positive note, I know we've all been very busy with a lot of ribbon cuttings and things of that nature as we've been attending together. One thing I'd love to highlight is just the, uh, the street fest hosted by our Parks and Rec Department this last, uh, um, weekend. It was well attended. It was a great event, and the mariachi divas put on a great performance. I, I played double duty, just like, uh, a few of us did, getting out of the comedy club to go check that out, and, uh, it was just a momentous, uh, uh, event here in the city of Bellflower, and being the, the first mariachi group, uh, in our downtown, it was just beautiful to watch it. So, uh, I wanna thank our Parks and Rec Department, uh, for a job well done, as well as the Publics, uh, the Public Works Department for facilitating that. Uh, and then I'd like to conclude on some more positive notes. Congratulating two, um, Bellflower natives, Anthony Gose and Christian Pinzon, both who graduated from Bellflower High School. Anthony Gose is actually a, uh, a son of one of our employees. He, uh, plays professional baseball for the Indians, and he got drafted to the U.S. Olympic Team, which is amazing. It's an amazing accomplishment. Uh, and then Christian Pinzon graduated Bellflower High School in two thousand and seventeen, and he debuted in the professionally, in the Mexican soccer league, um, a week ago, um, for the Chivas de Guajala Jara in Mexico. So, just wanna congratulate those two Bell Florians for, um, what they're doing and what they're accomplishing. I think it's something to be proud of as a city. Uh, and that's it, Mr. Mayor, just wanna share some fun facts.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sanchez? This past week, we have had some really exciting grand openings that we all attended, and, uh, you all remember where there once was a great Ford dealership on Artesia Boulevard at Downey Avenue, and that was called Ford West. They went away about twelve years ago when Ford redistricted what they were doing, but we have a new operator over there called STG Auto. They have two other lots, one in, uh, Montclair and one in Garden Grove. This is their third lot. They've now acquired a, a lot across the street from Ford West, which was at one time the Carmen Cusa Nissan, and, uh, so they got a big operation going over there. They indicated that they have been selling between four hundred and four hundred and fifty cars a month, which is a tremendous boon to our economy, and, uh, you can see them easily from the freeway. They're very excited, they're very credible. It's just a great place to visit if you're looking for a car. Also, one of the first, never had this before in the city of Bellflower, we have our very own comedy club, and it was, uh, instituted in the, over the last year where we've been putting it together. It was not able to open because of the virus, but we have now had some soft openings, and the council was invited over with city staff last Thursday night, and, uh, we got to, uh, witness, uh, all the great interiors that was put in that place. It's decorated beautifully, um, they have food service there, you have the opportunity to drink, uh, both soft and hard liquor, uh, tremendous comedians are available, and it's gonna be a real, uh, focal point of our city. As the other, as the owner told me, there are two other comedy clubs that are currently not open, one in Hermosa Beach and one in Pasadena, so anyone that wants to go to a comedy club can come to Bellflower and see some great acts and, uh, surprise visitors every once in a while that, that aren't announced, but, uh, really, people off television that wanna try out some of the material to see how it works. But, uh, we've got some exciting stuff coming on in Bellflower. The, uh, I need to talk a bit about how we took care of the night of the Fourth of July. Uh, we did get that one call from the lady who indicated how disappointed she was on all the activity. I believe that it, we have gotten better at it. We've got a long way to go before we get it down to a level that is not as, nearly as treacherous or so war zone-like. I do wanna commend our, uh, community service officers and our special assignment officers who were out that evening. Uh, we had about twelve or thirteen of them driving around, making sure that they could find who was doing this kind of activity, and a hundred and eleven citations were issued at two thousand dollars a pop. So, those that, uh, were caught are on the hook for a two thousand dollar fine. To give you an idea, they had twice as many people on the street looking in Lakewood. They wrote seventy-five citations. So, we got about a third more citations with half as many people on the street. So, I might com, wanna commend all those that worked that evening for the city of Bellflower, doing their best to try to catch those that are doing the wrong thing, and hope to teach them a lesson. Uh, we do take payments, uh, they can pay a hundred dollars a month, a hundred and fifty dollars a month throughout the year to pay for their mistakes, but it's just a tragedy, as it mentioned by Councilmember Hamada, how people just look the other way when it comes to these ordinances. We all suffer from it. Uh, the kids are upset, they can't go to sleep, the animals are upset, uh, you got litter all over everything, we have the potential for fire. It's just a bad scene. But luckily, we're past it for a year, but we're gonna continue to monitor this, as mentioned by Council, I mean, uh, Mayor Protam Ray Dutton, who said that we're gonna continue to monitor, and if you get caught putting up something that shouldn't be out there, you're gonna get slapped with a two thousand dollar fine throughout the twelve months of the year, just to make sure that we haven't forgotten you. But with that, I want to adjourn this meeting. Uh, luckily tonight, we have no one that we know of that has passed away in memory of, which is kind of unusual. Um, and we had a great report from the gentleman, George, who, uh, in charge of our event center, the main event center, very encouraging as to what's going on there. And what's cool about that event center, you know, even though it's two years old, it's only got about a year's worth of use on it, so it's really brand new. You know? Low mileage. I mean, you know, the sil, the silverware is all still shiny, the tablecloths are fine, the air conditioning's working, you're gonna be able to operate in a brand-new building 'cause we've kept it under wraps. It's been in garage for a whole year, and you don't get that everywhere. You go to these other places, they've got some hard miles on them. I'm not gonna mention any of them, but we've got light miles and few miles on our event center.
So the chairs and the carpet have got less use, is what you're saying?
That's right. Yeah, you know, low mileage, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna take that to the next, you know, and our goal is to have enough events there, we're gonna wear it out. We're gonna have so much activity that several years from now, we're gonna have to replace everything because we have so much activity there. That's our goal. But we're excited about it, it's kind of the focal point of our boulevard. You heard the story of we got a bride's room going in, Len Garecki's gonna make sure it's cool enough for a bride to sit in there to prepare herself for a wedding day, and, uh, I didn't know that we didn't have an air conditioner, but that's cool. We're gonna take care of that, and, uh, we're all looking forward to that. So, we're gonna adjourn this meeting to our regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty P.M. on Monday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. We're adjourned.